To call this meeting in order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invitation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Alan Green.
Here.
LaFleur.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Yarck.
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Approval amendments for the regular city council meeting of September 19th would be in order?
Motion.
Support.
It's been made in support. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Be not. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. Anybody like to address the city council? That's not on the agenda. Now would be the time. We will move on. Adoption agenda. Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes?
None.
Be not. Motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made in support. Any discussion? Be not. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve a consent agenda as presented?
Support.
Motion made in support. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. We're on to items for consideration, which we have six this evening. First one being consideration of audit presentation. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to receive a presentation from the city auditors, Plant Moran, on the fiscal year 2015-16 budget. Keith Schramansky and Dave Harrington are here tonight. Previously Keith had put out some of the graphs and charts for you. Should be on the table in front of you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Again, I'm Dave Harrington from Plant Moran. Keith Schramansky is with me as well. We're here to present the results of your June 30, 2016 audit. And just to sort of give you perspective, this is the first June 30, 16 audit presentation we're doing, which tells you how quickly things work out here. This is impressive that we're able to come out this early in the season because it's a lot of work putting together an audit. I get the pleasure, as I've done in the past, to give you the result of the audit, which is the best opinion you can get from an auditing firm, which is called an unmodified opinion, which means the information included in your 40-page audit report you can rely on for your planning and strategy and you can feel comfortable that your finance and treasury and your departments are working well together, giving you accurate financial information. So that's the good news. I got even better news. We're not going to go over all 40 pages. We have some highlights in the packet there that Keith will cover. What we'd like to do, if you have any questions on a particular slide and/or at the end, we'd be happy to take questions related to the audit or our letter of comments or recommendations. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Keith.
Good evening. I'm going to briefly walk through the four slides we have summarizing the financial results for the last year. Beginning on slide number one, we have a five-year history of general fund revenues. And you can see the 2016 amount of over $3.7 million is a five-year high for the city. It is worth noting, however, this is still well below some of the highs that the city saw in years previous to the recession. In 2008, total general fund revenues were about $4.3 million. So you're still $500,000 or $600,000 below the high of eight years ago. In 2008, property tax revenue, the general fund's largest revenue source, was $2.9 million. This year, it's about $2.5 million. And that includes $160,000 from the TFO revenue sharing agreement. So we've finally seen taxable values stop declining and level off and start to slowly inch up, but it's going to be a long time before it ever gets back to the levels it was in 2008, especially due to the limits by state statute of how quickly it can increase. Property taxes were the largest revenue source, as I mentioned. They were about two-thirds of the general fund's total revenue. And as is typical of most local units of government, the second largest revenue source was state shared revenue. That was about $525,000. On slide number two, we've got a similar five-year history for the general fund, this time looking at the expenditure side. The good news here is while you saw revenues increase slightly from 2015 to 2016, expenditures decreased. 2015 amounts were up just a little bit due to more capital acquisitions than we see in most years. In 2015, you bought some police vehicles. There weren't any capital acquisitions on the general fund quite as significant in 2016. Therefore, the expenditures were down about $170,000 compared to the prior year. Again, as is typical, public safety is the largest expenditure category for the general fund. That's about 45% of the total. On slide number three, we look at the fund balance for the general fund. When you add in the increase in revenues and the decrease in expenditures, with each of those heading in the right direction, you can see that there was an increase in fund balance from 2015 to 2016 of about $280,000. And just to take a step back and look at the overall trend for the last five years, when you consider the challenges the city faced with declining taxable values, we talked about how much lower revenues are compared to where they were eight years ago. The fact that over this five-year history, fund balance for most years essentially broke even, or a couple of years you were able to add to it, really is a credit to city council and management for keeping a close eye on the budget, making the decisions necessary to maintain a strong fund balance in the general fund. And you can see 2017 calls for just a very small use of fund balance. The same was true of 2016, but by maintaining expenditures below what was budgeted, the 2016 results were better than what was budgeted, and I wouldn't be surprised if I'm saying the same thing a year from now. Finally, on slide number four, we switch gears away from the general fund and look at the water and sewer funds. Again, similar to the general fund, overall positive results for both funds. Here we have two measures of the fiscal health of each fund. The blue line represents working capital, which is the current assets minus the current liabilities. And the orange line represents operating income, which is essentially the usage fees and other revenues minus the cost of operations. The sewer fund has a slight operating loss for the year of about $70,000, but that's after $380,000 of depreciation expense on the capital assets. So if you take that away, it was a very positive year for the sewer fund. Working capital increased, and similarly for the water fund, operating income was positive, and there was an addition to working capital. So both of these funds, as well as the general fund, continue to be in strong financial position. With that, I'll turn it back to Dave.
So that was a summary of your major operating funds, your general fund and water and sewer funds. The basic overall summary is a solid financial year. At June 30th, all the major funds were in solid shape, in strong shape, especially for a community of this size, and trending in the right direction. And so with that, I'll take any questions from council. Happy to entertain those thoughts.
Council, any comments? Any questions of our auditors? You did a great job.
Well, thank you. We'd like to thank Angel and the team, and John, everybody over in Water and Sewer. Worked very professionally, and I think you're well positioned going forward into this fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to receive and file the city of Richmond, June 30, 2016, financial report with supplemental information from Plant Moran, LP. Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
As I said, you know, I don't think the storm's really over as far as property values and the effects of pro-pros lay, revenue sharing. I think all those things are still a factor. And but I appreciate what our auditors are saying. I think it's been a team between council administration, our employees being reasonable in negotiations, and I've had a number of employees say, you know, "We understand that you've been fair with us, and we know that things are bad, and we're trying to keep a solid finding." But I think, appreciate everybody. It's been prudent. Everybody's worked together to stay solid. We talked about our water and sewer rates. Any, you know, attacks we have on how high they are, but the reality is, unlike other water systems, it seems our funds are solid, which allows us to maintain our infrastructure, which means we're not going to have surprises. We're not going to have, we have increases that are more around inflation and not 10%, 12%, 15%, like in the Great Lakes Water Authority, which still hasn't addressed, I think, all their infrastructure issues. So I think we're on course to do positive things and maintain a healthy city. So I appreciate it.
I agree. Also, you have almost no legacy costs, just a small amount, which unlike any city that we work with, which is great long-term. And in case you know anybody up in Lansing someday, you might be able to help us get some more money back too. Just thought I'd put that in there for you, John.
Yeah, and I appreciate the report on the legislative issues. Thank you very much. Appreciate the draft.
It was just for you.
Appreciate Angel. Yeah, is this your first full year?
No.
It is. And, you know, again, we appreciate you coming and working with us on, you know, a daily basis, and we appreciate the job that you do. We really appreciate the job you do. Me and all your administration, John. Thank you. Anything else? Any audience comments, questions? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion passes. Thank you, Plant Moran. Item number two is consideration of fire vehicle purchase. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider the purchase of a used fire rescue vehicle from Emergency Vehicle Plus. As we have discussed in the past, the fire department's rescue vehicle has problematic maintenance issues that have been ongoing for at least two years. Recently, while they were up at the Fireman's Memorial, Fireman Rob Trend and Rob Rindell came across a used vehicle from Clausen, I believe it was originally used in, in 1993, much more kind of built for the types of uses that we have. And also, I think priced within something that's reasonable, that our equipment fund that I know, we've all talked about having limited resources, it would fit within what we have. The current asking price is $25,500. And Chief Garen is here tonight to talk a little bit more about it with council. Chief?
Thank you all. Thank you all for having me and the department, the support of the department as well. As City Manager John Moore was saying, the gentlemen were up north a couple of weeks ago. It's not just the group that's here this evening. It's the entire fire department that knows what our current state is, not only with the equipment, but obviously looking for the best thing for the city of Richmond. We did come across this vehicle a couple of weeks ago. It seemed to be an immediate fix for what we're running into with regards to our rescue and the current conditions that it's in. Some of you may know what our current conditions are with the rescue. For some that don't, it's a vehicle that is not reliable anymore in a couple of different ways. The main way is starting. It carries a tremendous amount of equipment. It is our lead vehicle out if there's some type of a vehicle accident of some type. And to be honest, it's not trustworthy any longer. We come across this vehicle that would fit that need, and we're excited, and we want to see if this is something that the city council and the city of Richmond would consider. Like City Manager Moore had said, it's down to $25,500. That's already come down once that we know of. If not, it's already been brought down twice from the original asking amount, which was well above $30,000. We also have a group that's assembled from the department and city council on putting together a grant for something that would help us in the near future, but I don't think we have a timeframe on when that is to take place. And as every day goes on, it's another day that I don't think that this rescue that we currently have is going to last much longer. I mean, honestly, I don't see this thing lasting much more than two more years to where this opportunity here is going to probably last us, my best guess is 10 years minimum. Many advantages. There are disadvantages. There are advantages, but by far, the advantages outweigh the disadvantages. The advantages are cost. It's under $26,000 for this vehicle. Another advantage is the life. The life expectancy is going to be at least 10 years, at least. The structure of the frame, we're going to have something that we would consider maybe not quite a heavy rescue, but a mid-level rescue, which is quite a bit more than what we have right now. We've had a couple individuals from our department that are very qualified in looking over the vehicle from a structure standpoint, from a mechanic standpoint. Both have given their thumbs up. We've also had individuals from our department that have reached out to where we're getting this vehicle from, if we do get it, from Clausen. I also had the opportunity to talk to the current fire chief from Clausen, Troy Engel, and told me that if he had the money as well, he would buy it again. He said, "You're getting a very good, solid truck." He did tell me about one thing that we would have to watch out for, but we are already prepared for that with regards to a generator and the way that the unit is currently wired. It's not computerized, so there's no emissions, things of that nature, like our current vehicle is. That's part of our problem, is that although the vehicle won't start, and we've had it in numerous times over the last three years, we still don't know why it won't start. We're at a 50/50 shot every time we get a call and go into that hall and need to pull that truck. We don't know if it's going to start or not. And we've had the issue before to where we either had to pull another vehicle or call in support, or had support show up at the scene before we were there to help us with regards to extrication. Another advantage is that although this truck is 27 feet 6 inches in length, our current rescue is slightly over 25, and with our current ladder truck, everything will still fit within that bay, width, height, and length. So there will be no modifications required to the current haul. And then, of course, the vehicle itself. If we do have success in achieving this this evening, we would be the second owner. The truck was designed and built for Clausen, so it's only had one owner. The disadvantage is the fact that it's seven years old. It's a 1993 International. 466 engine, 250 horse, I believe. And it also has a three-man cab versus what we are currently used to, which is a five-man cab. As I had said before, for certain runs, like car accidents and things of that nature, that vehicle, you can pull five guys out if needed because of the equipment that it has and what we need to do. This vehicle, you would only be able to carry three guys, and that's fine. We'd have to change a couple of things within the way that we operate at the fire hall, but that's fine. That's something very, very easy for us to do. And then, of course, the other thing is the fact that it doesn't currently come with a generator. We had defined also that we might have to invest some money in an 8-kilowatt generator to put into this, but we're also looking at, within the next couple of days, pulling the old one out of the current rescue and seeing if we can get that one to fit into this one to where we won't have to invest that amount of money for a brand-new generator. Any questions?
Council, have any questions?
I think they've done their legwork. I think they thought everything through. The rescue that they currently have, correct me if I'm wrong, is loaded to the capacity already. Can't put any more on it weight-wise. We do have the extra trailer outside for the water rescue gear, I believe.
Mm-hmm. That is true.
Accommodating one vehicle, then, right?
That is true. We have a trailer out back that currently carries all of our water rescue equipment, as well as our hazmat equipment. This current truck, the way that I sized it up, and I could be a little bit off, but it looks like it could give us about 65% more capability from a holding standpoint than our current rescue. So our plan of attack was to take all the water rescue equipment that's in the trailer outside and put it into this rescue. We would still keep our hazmat stuff in the trailer outside, but it would strictly be a hazmat trailer. But yes, but yes, it has, it's a tank, and it definitely would fill our need.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve the purchase of the 1993 rescue vehicle from EV Plus in the amount of $25,500.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Discussion?
I believe that Council Yarck and I both jumped on that motion because we're both on the fire committee, and we, well, I can't speak for him. I completely support this. New this vehicle is, what, $400,000? Something astronomical. And we are going to be able to pay for this in cash. I mean, we have the money. To me, this just completely makes sense, though it, we have further goals. So the fire committee is not done because we have, we've been working with the chief. We've got great things. But I believe this will help get us through to those bigger goals that we have. And while I have the floor, I would like to thank you, Chief. And I know you have a fantastic staff that is supporting you, and you guys are all volunteers. I mean, that is just floors me. Every time I meet with you, all of your professionalism, everything that comes to me, I have just been so impressed with, and I really appreciate it. And glad you found this. This is such a blessing to the city that this fell upon us three weeks ago. So please, I know we're here to support it.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I compare with the comments of Councilor Green and Councilor of the floor as well. And I believe that we'll still be able to get some money out of the current rescue, right, as well?
Yes, that's the plan.
It was estimated nine or $1,000 or something.
Roughly five to 10, we're hoping.
So we're getting something back on that as well.
If we have some success in pulling that generator out of it to put it into this vehicle, though, the value would, I'm sure, would come down some.
Yeah.
But, but yes.
Yeah, but that's better than, I think, the cost for a new generator is like $14,000, $15,000.
Somewhere in that general area, yes.
Oh, yeah. Job well done.
Jeff?
Yeah, as I said, as Councilor Green said, we do have a fire committee, and I want to thank the fire department for inviting the committee down to talk about this. When we came down to see the initial presentation, they were very prepared. They had done their homework. It wasn't an off-the-cuff thing. They really had everything answered for us that we were thinking about as concerns. And also, we talked about keeping the budget balanced. I think, as we said, a new rescue, $200,000 plus to do that, you know, all the way up to $400 that a new rescue can be, and the department being reasonable and coming up with an acceptable solution, that this was a no-brainer as far as it's a, you know, perfect shot in the basket as far as addressing your needs, timeliness within our budget, and we'll still be able to try to go forward on the fire grant. So thank you to the department, and I hear particularly, everybody on the committee did a lot of work, but I hear particularly Rob Trend and Rob Rindell kind of did the really heavy lifting on this. I think both of them should be recognized for both of those.
I appreciate that. No, no, I wanted to say that as well. You know, thank you to everybody for allowing us to bring this to your attention for consideration. I'm up here talking about it a lot, but all the legwork was done by these two fine fellows that are over here to my left, Rob Rindell and Rob Trend. I mean, they did all the work, so they deserve a lot of credit.
Anything else? I think it's the right truck for the right time, you know? About time.
I had made much.
To take care of the problem that you've been dealing with all these years. And, you know, guys stumbled across that truck. It looks like something that you guys all support 100%. I think it's up to you. You guys are the ones that have to use it. So there's nobody who knows better than the department itself. So hopefully, there's, I'm sure there is full support at this table to get this taken care of.
All right. Thank you.
One question? How soon?
Right now.
Would we take a delivery?
Yeah, tonight.
Oh, tonight? Okay.
Right, it passes.
As it passes, I feel how released the check it'll be.
I mean, I knew it was out in the parking lot, but I didn't, okay. All right, so it's going, great. I didn't realize we were that fast on track. Wonderful.
No reason to drag our feet. You know, I mean, this is something that's been, I mean, even the parade, it didn't make it down the parade route. That's pretty sad.
Yeah.
Luckily, we ran into this, and it's going to work out, so there's no reason to drag our feet. As a matter of fact, the check is written, if good old, if good old days, if the city council so wishes.
Wait a second, do you think good old days will pay for it?
I'm just thinking about, oh, it didn't make it down the road. You know, the other one didn't make it down the road. But if council so wishes, the check's ready to be handed over to these gentlemen, and we can take ownership immediately. We need it. We need it back online as fast as possible.
One more comment, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, how you said it didn't even make it down the parade. The fact that it doesn't start, it's parked in front of our ladder truck. So if we needed that ladder truck, how the heck would we be, that's two vehicles that would be down.
I think John pushed it out of the way the last time.
But that's delaying time, so I mean, that's how critical this is.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Any audience comments? Back to the table. Do we need a motion here? I'm not sure.
We have one.
We have a motion.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Yes, we did. I'm sorry. It's over here. All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, folks.
Item number three, consideration of bid award salt purchase for the 16-17 winter season. Mr. City Manager?
The city of Richmond currently participates in the MyDeal Road Salt Program through the state of Michigan. MyDeal is an extended purchasing program which allows Michigan local units of government to use state contracts to buy goods and services. We've been utilizing MyDeal for salt for a number of years. The expense, well, let's move back. The city's cost for salt this season will be $40.32 per ton, which is a decrease of $17.73 per ton from last year. The expense would be $28,224 if 700 tons were purchased.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to authorize expenditure up to $28,224 to Morton's Salt for the purchase of rolled salt for the fiscal year 2016-17 winter season with the expense charged to appropriate line item, salt purchases DPW General Fund.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion on this? It's nice to see something going down in price. Hopefully, it works as well as the old salt. Any other comments? Any audience participation on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Item number four, consideration of bid award 2016-17 winter maintenance. Mr. City Manager?
Continuing with the winter theme here. Council is scheduled to consider awarding the winter maintenance contract for city offices and police posts. Bids were solicited on the Mitten website in addition to being placed in the Voice newspaper, and we received two bid proposals. The low bidder being Stafford Landscaping, who was also the low bidder last year and did a nice job for us here at this facility.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to award the 2006-2017 winter maintenance contract to Stafford Landscaping with expenses charged to line item 101264818, contractual services, buildings and grounds, General Fund.
Support.
Motion's been made in support. Any discussion? I think the idea that they did a good job last year, I'm glad to see they're coming back then, low bidder. Any audience comments on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Against? Motion does pass. Item number five, consideration of special event request for the 5K run. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to give consideration on a request from Jennifer Buer from Allstate Insurance for Running with the Devils 5K race and Fund Run. That's a fundraiser. Jennifer, along with the Richmond cross-country coach, are organizing this event for the second year. Last year was the initial year utilizing kind of the school campus drives, and then when they get through Division Road, they kind of cut, hit a corner across Division from the middle school drive into Grove Street, up to the trail, and then jump on the trail. So it worked out well last year, and the closure for Division Road is minimal. Usually, I know last year I was out there watching how it worked with the police, and they were just able to kind of stop traffic when the runners were approaching, get them across Division Road, and then open it back up because once they're across Division, they don't come back on the Division. They end at the trailhead park. And so that worked well, and we're recommending approval again.
Would you like to address council?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I think he said a lot of it. One change that we are processing through, last year it was for the cross-country team as well as for Coach Coker, and he fortunately is declining community support at this time. So he kind of scrambled, which is a good thing, although still going through treatment. He feels he's gotten a lot of support and knows that there's other people in need. So what we're doing this year is a scholarship fund for all of our runners and our, all of the high school students. This is kind of a last-minute change because he's declined, so we had to make some adjustments there. We're doing a good hands in your community because we like people that give back to the community. So the teens that participate... So, the teens that participate, we're going to have multiple scholarships awarded for that, so. And it's still also, because the cross-country team helps volunteer and coordinate everything, 50 percent of the proceeds will go to them as well. So, abiding good weather, better weather than we had last year, it was awfully cold and rainy.
It was cold and rainy, yeah.
It was kind of miserable. Yeah, but we still had over, we had just under 100 people came out, and people came out and registered the day of, which floored me. I wouldn't have gotten up and thought it was a good day to go for a run, but we had a lot of good community support, and we've already seen several registered runners as a second annual event, so I would like council's consideration for a special event, please.
So, Jennifer, you have not only the 5K, but isn't there's the little kids?
We also do a quarter-mile fun run for the kids, where we do pumpkin painting, cider and donuts. They all get a medal, so we utilize the high school track, and then the race starts after that, over and between the middle school and the high school, and as Mr. Moore said, goes down, crosses 32, and goes to Grove. So, we have, in all of the Friday folders, going home with your permission, after tonight, all of the Friday folders for the elementary students and the preschool on up, as well as all the high school and middle school.
Very good. Any questions?
Do you have any questions? I have a question. Would it be possible to get the city manager a flyer or something like, because I, is there a flyer?
I had them printed today.
Okay. No, just so we can, how we can help you promote it, or?
I absolutely appreciate that. I was a little hesitant to distribute anything prior to this evening in getting the formal approval, but they were printed, and they're sitting all in my office, waiting for this evening.
I have another question.
Yes.
Do you plan on this becoming a regular?
I would like to make it an annual event. My thoughts and hope is that we would have somebody in the community that could use the community support as a backup. We did decide to do Good Hands in Your Community. I work, I own the Allstate in town, so, you know, Good Hands, all that good stuff, and then giving back to students that give back to the community. So, it's all based on what they do, community volunteerism and community involvement, so we want to create a scholarship fund to kind of give back to those community members.
Great. Do you have other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event application from Jennifer Buer for the 2016 Running with the Devils 5K race and fun run on Saturday, October 22, 2016, and to allow the brief closure of Division Street from the School Service Drive to Grove Street, and the closure of Grove Street between the trail to Division Road from approximately 9:00 AM to 9:15 AM. Support.
Most been made and supported. Any further discussion? It's a nice event. It's a good, glad to see that you're doing this, and hopefully, you have better weather, because I froze and got west past you. Yeah, yeah, which is surprising, as you said. A lot of people showed up the day of, and it couldn't have been worse weather. It could have been snowing, maybe, but it was, it was cold and very, very damp, and they still showed up, so that speaks volumes.
I forgot to mention, just like the great community, and they've welcomed me as a business owner, and so I like to give back to the community, and so I take a passion of running that I personally have and combine it with a way to give back.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
We appreciate that. Makes our community a better community.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck. Item number six is consideration of board appointments, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Library Board. Mr. City Manager?
The council is scheduled to consider making appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Library Board. We received an application from Rob Garber, who expressed his interest in being appointed to the BZA, and we also received the application from Alana Stump for her reappointment to the Library Board.
Thank you. Motion to fill the Board of Zoning Appeals would be in order?
I make a motion to appoint Rob Garber to fill the vacant position on the Board of Zoning Appeals with an expiration date of 12/31/2017.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion? Rob, some of you may not know Rob Garber. The name Garber, his father was the mayor of Memphis for a number of years, but Rob's lived in town, as it says, for 23 years. He's also one of the electricians that donates all of his time for the Good Old Days Festival, and I have kind of pestered him the last year to put his name in and get involved in the community, and he finally has, and so, and I think we're going to have a ZBA meeting, did I hear? There's going to be one coming up?
Yes, probably, with the Siren proposal, if we go down that road, yes.
So, we probably haven't had a ZBA meeting in a year, a year and a half or something. I told him, don't worry about it, there's not going to be every single month, you know? Okay, okay, I'll make the time. He's also, he works for MDOT, he's an electrician for the Department of Transportation in the metro Detroit area, so I highly recommend that we approve his appointment. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
I can't believe that you passed them.
Yeah.
I think probably was strongly encouraged to participate in the community.
Yes, spoke like a true politician. Any audience comments? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes, we think, Rob. We also need to reappoint for the Library Board for a two-year term. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to reappoint Alana Stump to the Library Board for a two-year term with an expiration date of June 30, 2018.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion?
Just like to thank you, or thank her, for her continuing service. She does a great job, she keeps us on our toes, which I appreciate.
Very involved, very involved with the library, the friends of the library.
Friends.
Great to see her coming back again, begin on board there. Any other comments? Any audience? I put Siri away.
Get the fired of her in here.
Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes, we think, her, for the reappointment. Okay, moving on, city manager's comments, sir.
Just for those watching at home, we did have a little sewer issue, some minor repairs that need to be made up on Pound Road prior to the final wearing course, so we anticipate that those sewer repairs will be made this week, and we're hoping that the wearing course will be placed next week, so just kind of keep everyone updated on that. Also, the flu shots that Richmond Onyx did here, the drive-through flu shots at this facility worked well while they were kind of tearing down their old facility and moving over to Old City Hall. As they've done in the past with the flu shots that they did not distribute through their drive-through, they have them at Old City Hall on Main Street, where they are now have their offices, at 68225 Main Street. They're free to Medicare patients and $20 to everyone else, but if you missed it and still want your flu shot, you can go there.
Is that a 24-hour, John, do you know?
I don't know. I know that there's 20, people are there 24 hours a day.
Yeah.
I don't know whether they have the ability to give flu shots 24 hours a day, to be honest. Also, council emailed out, there'll be a groundbreaking ceremony next Monday at 5:00. There's also a flyer in your mailboxes on that for the new EMS facility, and I believe that you'll be getting invitations shortly to go to the school board meeting on October 24th. They kind of pushed it back for kind of a thank you, they want to acknowledge us for the work we did on the tennis courts. And then, after the meeting, the Fire Department members were kind enough to stay here, so if you want to get a closer look at the truck, you can go out front.
John, I'll question you on that date, because you had originally told me, I believe, October 10th.
Correct.
Has been moved to the 24th?
Correct. Yes, I just found that out late today.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay. All right, moving on, city council comments. Dennis?
I just want to thank the staff again, for the years I've been on council, it's been a pleasure working with them on all these budgets that we have to do every year, and it definitely is a pleasure working with them, they do a great job.
Jeff?
Well, I think Karen can confirm, our clerk, that the AV ballots are out, so apparently voting has already begun.
Oh, yeah.
Early, vote often.
Don't say that.
John?
Just like to wish all the Richmond schools, sports teams this week, good luck, homecoming week.
Homecoming, yeah.
Emily?
Just want to comment, I want a busy day, it was in Richmond, as most people probably know, the demolition of Bremmons. It's kind of a sad day, but also exciting to see what's going to go there, and that's all.
Jamie?
Just excellent job. Angel, John, all your staff, fantastic. I love, we get rave reviews, you guys make us look good. Appreciate it.
Michael?
I'd just add to Emily's comments about the teardown of Bremmons. Before the meeting tonight, I was in town at that section, it was interesting, there was all kinds of cars around there, and people taking pictures and actually grabbing mementos and things, so that building's been around for a while, but it had to come down, it just was getting into such bad shape, so.
Lot of memories there, a lot of memories.
Mixed emotions on that one.
Yeah, yeah, well, like you say, it's changed. Building was in rough shape, from what I have been told. We did look into it, just to see what exactly was going on, and the building had been gone too far, it was cheaper to tear it down and build a new building if that's what was going to happen. Renovations were pretty much out of the question. You know, and there are, as far as I know, John, as of this morning, there's no building permits that have been pulled on that property. We have not sat down in a long, long, long time to have any kind of a discussion with the owners of the property on anything that might be going on there, is that correct?
That is correct.
A lot of people are wondering.
Yep. When they called in over the winter, after they had acquired the property, at that time, their general plans, and this is just general discussions at this level, they have not submitted anything, was that they would take that property and somehow incorporate it into their existing shopping center there, and possibly an outbuilding there, but that's, as you mentioned, no plans have come into the city yet.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I do have a follow-up question on that. Do we know why the garage is still there? Is it, they took everything, they knocked everything else out except for?
I don't know the answer to that right now.
Okay, we go to the calendar. Today being October 3rd. Tomorrow, the Library Board will be meeting at 6:00 PM here at City Hall, and then we'll commence for a park walk through, through the smaller parks in Richmond, being the bigger parks were done last year. It's also the South End's recycling tomorrow, the 4th. Tiffel will be meeting at a different time, they will be meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 right here at City Hall. John, will they still be meeting on the 26th of this month also?
Yes, yeah, the meeting this week is kind of the September.
A delay from, yeah. Okay, and then, of course, John mentioned it, we will be having a homecoming parade on Main Street. It'll start over at the BB Park and work its way over to, up through Washington Street to Main, Main to 32, 32 back over to the school. That will be on the 7th, this coming Friday at 5:00. The homecoming game will be at 7:00. Go Blue. The, I can barely read that.
Fire Department open house on Sunday?
Oh, yeah, that's the other thing.
Sorry, my handwriting is pretty poor.
We will go to that now. This says the open house is on the 16th. It is the 16th, okay. So, the volunteer fire department, you got, you got ahead of me here. Might as well talk about it now, eh? Open house for our volunteer fire department in celebration of Fire Month here will be on October 16th. Breakfast will be served starting at 8:30 till noon, and then an open house from 12 to 3:00. You've got a helicopter that will be landing, and the old fire truck rides, and many other demonstrations going on. So, that sounds like fun on October 16th, and it's such small print on the 11th, I believe it could be Cable Commission? Yes, 7:00, the Cable Commission will be meeting on the 11th, and of course, that'll be the North End of Town for recycling. The Planning Commission is scheduled to meet on the 13th at 7:00, right here at City Hall. And then, we get to the Fire Department open house on the 16th again. City Council will be two weeks from tonight, right here at City Hall at 7:00. We also have, to give you a heads-up, the Fall Book and More Sell, which will be happening at the Lois Wagner Memorial Library from October 19th through the 22nd, and there will be a preview night on Wednesday for a small donation, and then you can get a bag of used books for $2 a bag. So, that is going to be going on October 19th through the 22nd, and then there will be a pumpkin party at the Lois Wagner Memorial Library on October 26th from 3:30 to 5:00, and all ages are welcome. And that's just by call, you can get RSVP to the library at 727-2665. I believe that's all the announcements I have at this point. Is there anything else we need to add to the calendar?
We do have one, we have a quarterly workshop, I think it's right after our next council meeting.
Yes.
It'd be good that people know that we have that, because by the time, our next meeting.
18th.
No, yeah.
The 18th?
18.
Didn't get marked down. Okay, that's a quarterly workshop, I assume that's at 6:00?
Yes.
6:00, that is open to the public, that'll be right here at City Hall. That is on the 18th. Okay. Okay. Moving on, there is no closed session this evening. Is there any other business of the city council this evening? Be not, motion adjourned, be in order.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Most been made and supported, there's no discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thanks for being with us.